Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they do perish.
Do you need anything else?
Well, these are like a personal.
Oh, yes.
Just Jesus.
I know, I love you.
Oh, that's it.
I think you see about that number.
No.
I mean, you know that.
Okay.
Well, yeah, Amy, what's our call?
Yeah, I just kick off. Thank you for showing us the evening and and for being online. Um, what we're looking to do this evening was really just to walk through all three plans, these part of Volta River Falls. Make sure that you have a better understanding of the overview of where we're headed. Before we run into the public comment period through February. So I want to do a ton from this presentation, I'll turn it over to her. We'll we'll let her run through the presentation. If you've got questions, jump in, but hopefully what happens at the end, also if you have specific questions about each thing as well, so.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks Amy. Uh, yeah, great to see you all again in this exciting time to uh get together and talk about the Volta River Falls. Uh, process. So I just wanted to lay out what's in front of you. You have a copy of the presentation and then this little hand up here is just kind of a. We'll pin on these the content of this in the slides, but we thought was just a nice takeaway for you. And very importantly, on the back in yellow, we already got some in dates and things here. So here, please update your your calendars, there's good notes on on the back too as well. But again, feel free to interrupt me as we work through. Um, but this presentation is really intended to um give you the high level overview of what are some of the recommendations, the solutions that are identified in these. Uh, three plans so that you can kind of, as you take a look at them, understand where, jump in, see where you want to look and maybe you want to call one. As long as you be most interested in, we will announce the public review over the months of February. So you're kind of armed with that information as we move forward. See, there we go. Okay, so uh quick update and kind of the status of the three plans. Um, so each of them from an approval process or review process, um starts with uh steering committee, review and then action. They all make a recommendation of the uh plans as they move forward. Plan commission will or has reviewed um and taken action on these and then um all coming to city council adoption at the end of March as well. So um the three plans are each handled individually before they get to you, but you will not take, you will take action on all three plans. And the suites uh at the end of of March. Uh, so both the bike and pedestrian can plan and outdoor recreation plan have been through review and action from both. There's individual steering committees uh and the plan commission uh as well. So that happened over the months of uh November, December, just the early month of January with a outdoor recreation plan going through plan commission. Um, and then the comprehensive plan itself, I'll be back here on Thursday to meet with the plan commission and talk about review. Um, and their comments on the comprehensive plan uh to get that ready to go for public review. They won't take action um on the plan, make a recommendation to you until after the public comment period, so they're meeting in March. So this is a key slide, which is kind of what dates and expectations are, what we'll close with, what this timeline looks like as well, which is just wanted to lay out where each of them are in the process. But so I'm going to step through each of the plans in this order as well. So we'll start with bike and pets, then outdoor racket and then the comprehensive plan. Uh, so bike and pedestrian plan, independent ground setting, I just wanted to kind of provide us a bit of the vision and goals that are established within uh this plan. A lot of these same words pop up in the goal slides for the other two plans as well, but really again, we're focusing on goals around accessibility, connectivity, health and safety, sustainability. And I'm not about to tell this with thinking about specific recommendations for the bike and pedestrian plan. I did, can these slides go through the planning process that we went through in terms of data collection and analysis? Um, those are the things that we've talked about a lot uh through this process and so, um, but that of course is an highlight. It was in the plan itself about the specific data that was collected and analysis that was done. But I wanted to jump and highlight the recommendations that have come out of this plan so you kind of have an understanding of what we're we're looking at. So the bike and pedestrian plan really focuses on recommendations in two spaces. The first is physical improvements where we would see construction of infrastructure uh within the community and also policy level recommendations as well. So starting from uh physical uh recommendations and the infrastructure improvements, there are two key maps that are included in this plan that really outline the specific recommendations of this plan. And again, remembering the bike and pedestrian plan is, you know, our comprehensive plan is up here at fifty thousand feet. The bike and pedestrian plan gets us down here to that twenty thousand foot level where we have are identifying very specific improvements. Um, there's still more work that has to happen with that. So the first uh graphic that I have up on the screen here are our um spot. Bike competitive improvements are really looking at maybe some intersections and peak crossing areas where we'd like to see uh improvements within our infrastructures, uh bike and pedestrian infrastructure. System. So we've got um different enhanced crossings, intersection improvements, very separated city or bridge improvements. Um, identified to supplement um our infrastructure here as well. Um, so we won't, I won't go through all of the specific details of where these pieces are, things of that nature. But I did want to highlight, so through the analysis, um, our sub consultants all thought we through and said, okay, here are some key intersections where we have um infrastructure, that where we have intersections and things like that. Maybe from a safety or mobility perspective, what are improvements that we need to see at these locations to, you know, create an efficient system for that nature? Now, these general recommendations have been identified in these locations, but there's not, design hasn't been completed for both these and the core of our components. So these are listing the things that we like to see from an infrastructure perspective, but there's still more work that has to be done for these actually to be installed.
Can you quick guide to answer what you're talking about? Could you tell me how you, uh, let's see, I'm the most that I prioritize?
Yes, so I actually get to that uh here in public slot. So let me, let me get there and pretty touch back. Sure, I did that. Um, so yeah, so there there we have our kind of our spot improvements or those key intersection components. And then um the, we have the actual segment or linear recommendations that have come along with this as well. So these maps should kind of be looked at together and when they they work together. Um, but this is the actual um facility recommendations that we'd like to see. And there's a wide list of what those different recommendations are. From widening shoulders to creation of shared use paths and things. I won't get into the detail about what each of those means. But the analysis process went through and said, where are these key connections that we need to be making? And then what are the facility recommendations based on, you know, what the existing roadway is or location is, what do we have the capacity to um build and some of those things? So um again, there are some places where we're using our, you know, existing streets and building upon or adding infrastructure into the existing space. Um, and then also looking at where we can make some of those connections that we're looking at outward growth as well. So the same thing here with the intersection improvements. We show where we, where those recommendations are, those different facility types. The actual implementation that will require where we're to be done in terms of actually designing. Um, what that looks like, what side of the street it goes on, you know, those types of things will have to happen with the implementation. So then I get into how these were prioritized, how we can kind of look at this list. So there's a long list of things that could be done and they can't all be done at once. It'd be great if we had unlimited funding and could just go ahead and do whatever you want with us, but of course, that's not the reality. Uh, so the implementation plan um lists all of those different um actions. So we can take one from a physical implementation space and a policy implementation space. So as I was mentioning, there's kind of those two pieces there and looking at different things from quick build, demonstration projects, different funding mechanisms to help us. Um, fund these improvements that have been identified. But I think the important piece to understand with this is this is again, a great list of we take action and work with this list. Uh, so the tool that's in place here from the bike and pedestrian plan is the identification of uh priority and then complexity related to each um implementation action of each recommendation. So um there are the plan details and specifics of how the priority and complexity were generally pretty self-explanatory. From a priority standpoint, based on usage or need or things, what is that overall priority for this specific improvement? And then the complexity factor, how hard is it for us to achieve that that implementation? Is it, is it a huge funding mechanism? Is it create, you know, we have to work with a lot of partners in order to achieve how, you know, or is it something that's quick and easy and it's our way and it's a demonstration project and we can just go and move forward? So it's a combination of those two criteria that help us identify where we could be spending some attention um from that perspective. So to get specific into this, and then shout out a pause to just make sure that I'm articulating this in an understandable way. But um really, when we look at kind of combining that kind of priority and the complexity and also to look at the different types of um project categories that come up with this. So here we're looking specifically at things that are high. So these are actions that are really going to provide a key benefit uh to the community that are really going to improve our connectivity and help us make steps towards the the goals and vision that we established at the beginning of this process. And then as we break down the complexity, that allows us to kind of see the different kind of project types or implementation we might be looking at. So a project or a solution that is identified as a high priority and low complexity is a key point within the plan as a uh a quick win. This is something that is going to, is something we should take advantage of our, not very complex for us, but it's going to provide a high benefit. Um, and so there's a lot of examples of these drawn. I pulled out West Division Street, siphing, strapping and signing a conventional contract. It's a quick win because we're not changing the the pavement at all. We're just putting some paint down on on the existing pavement. So it's a pretty easy thing for us to go in and uh achieve there, generally speaking. Um, but then there's also our high priority and medium complexity projects that are more complex, but they do provide a high benefit. So they're kind of that medium rung of things there. And then our high priority and high complexity, these are, they provide a big benefit for us, but it's just more work that has to be done in order to achieve um uh success there. So the example I pulled out was Main Street to reconstruct with a high quality separated biking and walking and intersection improvement. So obviously there's a lot more construction that goes into that, there's more planning time that goes into actual design, uh works, different dollars to fund construction and those types of things. Um, so that kind of helps us break down particularly our high priority projects into a level of, you know, extra worth that is um has to come into place for us to achieve success. The piece beyond that is we haven't the like level of some, some of it is just opportunity based a little bit here um as well. And you know, that's a kind of how this plan can move forward into implementation. It's not saying that, you know, all of our quick wins are ordered from one to ten because there's lots of things that come into play and change and allow, so that um categorizing them in these buckets allow you to kind of recognize what implementation is. When we might have a developer come in that's going to develop a new area that we weren't totally planning on. And so even if there's a connection we can make, what's the work coming to do there? So I don't know if maybe Sam or Amy have anything that can add on how like the structure works before.
I don't know. We're not asking anything more with them. Your priorities is, or when we look at it, there's lots of opportunities out there, no doubt.
Yeah.
Are you looking at, are we looking at the priorities first as a safety issue? Or are we looking at priorities first? Or how can we just start implementing? Are we, what do you say our number one priority is um with this bike and pedestrian project?
Yes, I think it's a little bit of a combination of safety and connectivity. Um, Sam, go ahead.
So I can just speak to oddly redeem medium or lower of high priority. We took demographic information, we took things, locations, so West Division Street being the core downtown and it being sort of a major thoroughfare, the community was seen as a higher priority street. So we did demographics, we did uh nearby schools, um, and then school and institutions and that started all weighed in. And there's some methodology actually in the plan if you want to take a look after, um, that goes into a little more details about it, including irony of basically location, demographics in the area, you know, which primarily in, right? And then just kind of surrounding uses was was the major thing that we used to start this project.
So when you say the division should want to be in a high priorities, I agree to talk about location as a district, but also just high traffic rate already.
Sure.
So would that want some more to be a, a safety concern issue or?
Absolutely. So if it's like some iron traffic, but also you can see these on the corner of Division Main, um, you know, elementary school relatively nearby as well, all elementary school relatively nearby as well. So like a bunch of different factors.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to get some understanding, but Stephanie is probably the number one concern.
Certain, certainly a big part of, yeah. And like I said.
I'm going to go with the first concern.
I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know exactly how they were ranked in terms of weight, but the plan, if you want to ask specifically, um, will tell you what was first and foremost. Um, yeah, that's up to you as well.
Yeah, I mean, oh, from the steering committee's perspective, they had a a good conversation on safety as part of the plan and it was part of their credit. So.
So you see from being.
Um.
The plan commission, um, uh, you know, we, we did discuss that because I mean, that's big people in our life, they it's a safety. So safety is like the number one concern for some of us. So, um, yeah, I think that's kind of they did help them.
So we're looking, we get things saved that could potentially increase bike traffic or usage.
Right, yeah, yeah. And one factor that comes in from a safety perspective and why we've identified different facility types and how it all size. But it's all, um, we need to respond to the the context and the usage thing. So, um, you know, on a higher volume roadway where we might have a lot of bike and pedestrian, like we want maybe this made, for example, having a separated protected facility for bikes and pets provides more safety. Um, for them. So there is a safety component that goes into why the specific recommendations were identified, identified for different locations. So that is another factor called safety is incorporated into them as well.
So you, you work with other city departments like the police, um, when it matter in safety?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Hey, um, the same methodology was said used from a policy and program perspective. So these are the items where we um need to develop a policy or do a start planning. It's not that built physical improvements, it was just kind of that division there. The same structure and concept is used, the criterion that was used to identify the priority and complexity is a little different here, but the same general intent is there. So from an example perspective on the quick win side, developing a complete streets policy to prioritize the needs of people walking and biking in the community as a quick win. I mean, you know, it takes a little work, it's staff time, but it's something that can be done relatively easy. Um, the high prior, uh, oops, the low complexity, that is my error, for low complexity, you don't entirely, yeah, it's not supposed to be that. That is my error. Um, but the high priority, high complexity down at the bottom, um, a safe routes to school program. Um, that builds on the existing two thousand A that identified as that high complexity, um, and a high priority down there at the bottom. So I think from a overview perspective, again, we wanted to again give you a, an insight on what the direction was and how things were organized there. Uh, but from a kind of key takeaway or key components of this, um, is that investment is needed for success. That this plan will take the combination of those quick wins and most high complexity for us to really create, um, and create a network that achieves the vision that was established for this process. And unfortunately, you know, investment will be be needed. Uh, but also recognizing that your power, your staff are a powerful resource in achieving uh that success. We've got a lot of great staff already in play and they can be used in different ways to help achieve success, um, you know, here as well. Um, but that quick wins can spur excitement and investment in this plan, um, and that the the community supports this. So we heard a lot about desires for bike competitive infrastructure and connectivity in the community. There's a desire for people to be able to move more safely, efficiently by walking and biking throughout the community. And that if we can look at those quick wins, a great part of identifying quick wins is those sort of easy things that you could do and spur some excitement across the community while seeing some of those improvements. Um, come into play at a lower, you know, investment to complexity, um, from that set of things. And I think the real important piece to on that last one with the connected community, that is woven through all three of these plans and the success of this plan. It is really important for achieving some of the greater connectivity success, economic development success that we identified as in the comprehensive plan as well. So that to me is one of the biggest connections between um this plan and the comprehensive plan, is that concept of connected community. Um, just shouldn't think if I could kind of touch on. Um, but I think the other key takeaway too is that it's going to balance, it's really exciting to look at where those physical improvements are, that's exciting. But those policy guided components are really also important um for this and also can, you know, state routes to school, for example, is another idea that. Obviously brand eligible for certain things if you have an up to date state routes to school plan. And so, you know, providing that funding and things like that is another great tool there as well. So any other questions or comments on the bike and pedestrian plan or anything I missed?
I, I think part of the tool we gotta, I think we gotta remember too that Amy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, a lot of the stuff we already do all the time. I mean, whether it's, whenever we get new development in town or infill in town, that's always the first thing we look at, well, can they help us pay for sidewalks? Can they help pay for connections here and there? So a lot of it we're already doing, it's just this plan helps us to. Umbrella to, yeah, to, to be more of a, you know, a concept of maybe we should focus a little more on this next time we do something, you know? So I think we gotta remember that we already doing a lot of this stuff. It's not like, it's not these plans, it's not like this is not what you're doing, this is what you have to be doing. So that's, I, I think people need to remember that outside too. A lot of this stuff, other than this plan or the comprehensive plan or, you know, all three plans already do a lot of it.
We do do a lot and the community is really connected.
Yeah.
We've got a good network.
Yeah.
I think there's some solid things that we can do to make it even better and that's a good stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you can, and staff does a great job, okay?
So we're council, we're elected officials to have an impact here, or I advise you that your greatest impact might be, is for you and carefully to. But it will, by then come to you with two, two groups looking at and recommending, but you still have the ultimate say when you look at that list. I'm not sure it's a good use of your time to, to debate whether it's low E or high complexity. That's probably better left to, to the advisory group and set and staff and consultants to kind of characterize that complexity. But it's still open to your debate. If you're like, well, that's going to be high complexity, you got it low, so that's skewing your, your score, then we want to hear that. But I think your best, your time is best spent looking at the overarching levels that are in there. Do you, can you read those goals and agree that that's what should be driving it? And then also on the policy perspective, this prioritization question is good. If you see something that you see as a high priority, but is marked as low, that's going to impact how staff implements on your behalf. So if you have a disagreement about some things' priority weight, that I believe is very policy driven. Now, obviously there's some science and harder than all the things that we talked about, but at the end of the day, you're adapting it as a policy document. So if you look at something, um, and you, you just disagree generally, um, or even mostly, um, you should let us, that, that should be discussion. You don't have to have a pre discussion with, with Amy or Stephanie, but or you can also talk to, to the mayor or kind of the city commission and see if you get better understanding of why that was put as a low, medium, high. But that's where you can have some impact on ultimately what is going to get done. Because if we plan it and it rises to the priority list, you know we have good record of getting it done. If it lingers in the low priorities, it's, it's likely to stay on the wish list for a long time unless some specific developer comes in at the right neighborhood at the right location. Or some grant program, just as a perfect fit. Obviously, we're going to spend our time on stuff that's, um, that's rated in the high burn. So that's where I would tell you to put your black policy focus list on is when you're reading the actual documents and you're looking at priority, please let um Amy, Stephanie, myself bear the handle that you're like, well, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, because that's where you need to make the amendments and get to that margin of there's things you want to make an amendment. That's where you demand.
But at that time, we didn't have quite the usual information about this.
You're going to have little to no financial other than, you know, the typical one dollar sign, two dollar sign, three dollar sign type of measure that staff can give you. But you, but it's not going to say there's forty one point nine miles of path recommended and that equals five point nine million dollars. So we could go with that ever, but that's not what we're anticipating.
Well, we're just going to kind of deploy as we're kind of, we're looking on C I P. We're looking through draft plan going, okay, here's the quick wins that we can forward into this next year's C I P. If there's something that you think should be a higher priority, yeah, that cues us to get it into where it should be with that.
But it's to me, it just seems difficult to make some decisions without, I mean, what if some cost a million dollars? We don't know.
Yeah.
It's a priority. So staying for that, that's my question is, how's all expected to dollars because all the entire game.
So C I P is how it gets that. At some point to some extent, but C I P is the other one, the other one for these implementation ones. So we'll take the implementation plans from all three of these plans. And then staff is going to sort the priority projects and see if we can fit them into C I P. And then you'll say, yeah, they'll have a hard time getting there unless you're the council members or you're lobby for them, which you, that's another possibility that you have. It's like, well, how come that one was not done? And in the plan, I want, want that higher, you know, you're not giving a C I P.
And it also allows, if like, that's the space where family can run this grant to, like, we know that we're not going to be able to fund Main Street without other funds. There's, you know, tech grants and different things out there that we can buy for that can be part of that planning process to, if it's a high number.
Yeah, I just wanted to interject that a lot of these um proposals, I can have them in particulars, like, okay, this intersection, you know, we, or things we can make safer. It doesn't tell us why. I mean, we, we could make choices, I think, uh, for a lot of it, it's like more expensive or less expensive. Um, so it doesn't have, I mean, I mean, it just kind of you know, has areas and suggested avenues to, to, uh, to make that area safer for and more attractive for riders. But, um, you know, it doesn't have that, you know, um, we're going to do this in this specific, um, you know, we're going to build an island over here and then we're going to have flashing lights. So it doesn't have that kind of detail.
Both, both staff will add the detail in the estimates with the C I P.
Right.
So again, you help us tell, tell, again, you don't have all the power with knowing all the money. But you're going to generally be able to look at these lists and go, high, low, medium priority, I agree with that. Staff is obviously going to take the higher priority stuff and they're going to try to encapsulate. So like for a division, the quick win vision project will become C I P two thousand twenty three dash one hundred and nineteen. And then Sam or somebody will write up a little description of what that would be and it would include this many miles linear painting and we accept that based on our pain budget, it's going to cost this amount. And then it would become a capitalized identifying project, same with safer house school, right? Safer house school will become a project in the C I P two thousand twenty three dash one hundred and twenty. All right, it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars to hire an consultant and and X, Y, Z we put in there and you'll see that. But you don't, you know, realistically and practically, you don't see, you don't see a hundred and fifty C I P projects because we've already carved out a whole bunch. That we don't see a realistic way to get to. And then in the past, we've had help from the council saying, well, how come this isn't on there? And we said, well, it's because they didn't get the list and we said, no, we'll grab it and it goes off the, off the list. And, um, that could be because you found that there's more property than what we thought or because there's a new grant program for it or because. Um, we don't want to tie it into a dollar or something. So everything is, you know what, I'm not trying to talk in circles, but everything works in circles. It's like, do you plan an effort? It's like, do you plan an effort and try to pick our best efforts in what to do? Then put some extra effort in as capitalizing those, the budgeting on. And then trying to figure out how much we can get into our own things. And then you get to say, well, you didn't do enough or you did too much, or. Um, so it'll, it'll be in a circle that, but we're not, we're not set, just so you know, we're not setting ourselves up to estimate and capitalize every implementation action that's recommended in these three plans. Now, there are, there are places that do that. You can do that. It's, um, not sure the estimates are that accurate when you do it in mass, but. But you can do it. I just don't know that it's going to use our time. I think it's better you save your time for you to say, wrong, that's not a priority. Get that one off the table. So a lot of times the council can really help staff by saying, don't, let's not spend any time on that. As much as it is, no, I'd watch you anywhere that one moved up. It's sometimes just saying, I'm the voice of the people and they don't want you to spend time on a dedicated bike lane on Yada Street. And that's okay for us to hear, um, so that we can better interpret that for the sort of, does that make sense? Sorry, I didn't want to slow you down too much. It's a good question point and it's repeated in each of these plans. And I think that the prioritization is where you can, you can have an impact and you also should look at those goals um, and make sure, because a lot of things are built around that. So if you're like, that's exactly opposite of the decision you're making. Well, we already made it in the paper. So you have to help us on making it if you really feel sorry about it.
Hey, what happened to the blue bike program?
Um, it was a trial that was largely successful and was not seen as having enough pros to outweigh the cons. So the cost seemed greater than the benefit. So they kept believing the latest iteration was some of the children's bikes up or whatever were around. We haven't really done the full lot of this everywhere in probably two, three years. That's how, that's my understanding. I guess you weren't until.
Yeah, that's interesting because that could be tied right along with this too, if, you know, if there just wasn't the use for it or.
I think most of that are the same thing.
I don't know, most, but.
Yeah, and of all this town, Clayton, I know I said twenty.
There's still some in use privately, but just thought you'd view that. View that there would just, there would just be borrowing and that's okay too. But yeah, that's why I think characters is was trial. We modified the program a little bit after a couple of years and it still seemed.
They only did it two summers or did you do it three summers?
Yeah, I don't know.
So that's something, three, is it? Maybe three. So I'm assuming some of the, um, you know, priorities are all high. Um, I can't, I can't figure out where's, you know, how high were priorities? Is it based on input we've got that you guys have got so far with the community? And through February when we had more creative input, that might change some of the priorities a little bit based on creative input?
Potentially, I think the piece for all of this, that our goals, the stewardship plans are founded in community input. That's what we heard. And so the priority or the what goes to the common benefit that's identified is the ability for that implementation that may best move towards the goals that we've set. So that's where that's really founded. I mean, the public may, we may hear overwhelmingly that, you know, this is, you know, why you have this as a low priority and maybe we switch it. But.
Okay. But so far it's mostly based on community input.
And that's another question. And I mean, I'm missing, it all does not get. So this plan, we're looking at this plan, obviously it's close to the government's. How long and period do we think this plan is operational for? Before you're coming back or another group's coming back to us and we're doing this all over again?
Yeah, so I think part of that, this was a little different in the initial statutory requirements for when we have to update this. A little bit, it's like an easy way of saying, it depends on how fast you move the implementation. Um, and someone have, depends on how fast scroll occurs. Uh, because, and how accurately our rules plan to occur. Because the implementate, the, those improvements in this plan, then look at our our land use plans and the comprehensive plan to identify where we have higher densities, where that may, where we might have higher user groups and some of those things. Uh, I think the general intent is that this, um, this three plan process has had some benefits in doing some of these three things in tandem. So, you know, the top plan, the one that has to be done again is ten years. So that would be offered to me for us to look at this plan again. And that level of update at that time might be just, hey, we adopted the demographics and made a couple of recommendations that we achieved this and that. Or, you know, something explodes and the, you know, we were able to achieve a lot. Maybe we need to be updating priority, priorities in five years, but kind of in ten year benchmark, it's a general standpoint. And because I'm on that topic, I think the same thing I'm playing for the outdoor recreation plan for being our perspective, that kind of needs to be updated every five years for the grant compliance. But always have to go with the steering committee is that the next five year update could be very minimal. Hey, the demographics have changed, you know, just, just kind of check in. But that the larger update would happen again until a ten for the comprehensive plan. Great question. Okay, you want to keep us moving on that, that's okay. Um, I have to skip over the goals for the recreation plan and just jump right in. I just wanted to pause on the assessment piece and I'm sure you all probably heard me say this at one point. But just want to get around us in the analysis piece that was done here. That included both a quantitative assessment where we were looking at the numbers and how we compare uh, to other communities throughout the country. And then qualitative, um, looking at what the public wants, what are their needs in this area of the recreation system? And so the graph that's on here, chart that's on here shows the, was also that quantitative assessment. So based on facilities, publicly available facilities that we have, what are the amenities that that's saying that we need as a community? Um, and I'll just use the twenty twenty deficit. So technically today compared to other communities, um, the numbers show that we could use one more, one additional or one, uh, outdoor ice rink, but and that was heard by the community. That we do want more winter activities. That is an amenity that the community would like to see. So that's a deficit there that's supported by both forms of the analysis that we've done. Conversely, the, um, numbers also show that we could use another outdoor basketball court. The caveat with that misses the identifies in the plan is that looks at full basketball courts. Our half courts don't get included as part of that. We can't take two half courts and help them as a whole. So, but we got heard nothing from the community through the engagement process that they felt like we didn't have enough outdoor basketball opportunities. So for us, that's not, didn't get filtered in as a priority that like we're so far behind because of A, the number of half courts that we have and also how we set in tandem with the public input that was received. So, um, just wanted to make sure we highlighted that both came into play here to kind of solidify the recommendations, um, that moved forward. So you can, but we did make sure in the plan to highlight the results of each of them independently, so you can see how they work together. Um, but moving quickly into the recommendations and priorities of the outdoor recreation plan. Uh, there's really, um, five areas where we looked at both physical and policy improvements in, um, tandem and then an opportunity project, which I'll hit here at the end. Um, but the big piece is there's a lot that goes into this plan work that has already been done. So we have two or three departments in one master plan, um, that, that work has already been done. We've already been implementing the work of the Sterling Pond, Hop and Park, Land Park master plans. But there's still work that was identified in those plans that hasn't been done yet. So we wanted to make sure where those things were still priorities for us, that they got carried forward into this outdoor recreation plan. So those are components that I brought forward. The priority or timeline of those, um, recommendations maybe did shift from what's in the plan, just because this is the document, we're looking at a whole system, how they're working together. So you may see a couple of tweaks there. Kennedy corridor plan, same situation. What, what recommendations came out of that Kennedy corridor plan that are very specific to outdoor recreation and help us achieve the goals that were set within this, um, within this plan? Again, there were, that's probably the year where we had more shifting of priorities or timelines from what was in that Kennedy corridor plan. Likely as a result of just activity that we're doing. But, um, so those, there's areas where we brought forward what makes sense in this plan from existing planning documents. And then also we've had some recommendations, um, that are just very specific to this plan in general. I'll talk about those. We did also identify four opportunity projects, um, as part of this plan that are much higher level. And there are things that are not, um, specific that we want to jump on at the moment. Um, and there are more things that if the opportunity arises that we should jump on. So the example that I would use is a community center. Community center, of course, is a indoor recreation versus outdoor recreation. But even though when we told the public, we were focusing on being outdoors, community center was brought up holistically. I'm sure that's known to, and that's not new news to any of you. Um, we wanted to make sure, but there's a lot of the funding piece of what it takes to create a community center. It is a hard thing that a lot of communities are dealing with. But if, you know, I've been joking with the steering committee, if I win the big lottery and I can come back and build you all a community center that you can call the Stephanie Fulgher's community center. You know, that's an opportunity right for us to build a lot of, and that's what those opportunity projects are meant to be. And if there's not an opportunity in front of us, this is an opportunity for us to get back on that. Uh, but I just wanted to highlight at a high level a couple of the recommendations that are specific to, um, to the plan. And I just pulled it up for here that kind of hit on a couple of different areas. So, um, and from a, a big standpoint, both of the qualitative and quantitative assessment, we're doing really well in the benchmarks of the, um, outdoor parks and the long park area and amenities that we have in the community. We're doing well exceeding in a lot of those areas and have community recognize it's that as well. That we have a lot of great things and we want to make sure that we maintain those things. So there's also opportunities for us to build on, um, those, uh, what we have as well. So things like accessible, um, play features or accessible amenities within our parks as well. So just a different way of looking at it, but also recognizing on that second one that we've got, we want to continue to provide a recreational programming that we have, that's a huge value uh, for our community members and so they have access to recreational programs. And that we should continue to support those and make sure that they're accessible, um, for all ages and abilities. Um, but then also some policy level components, um, like identifying list of minimum park amenities for each park category. So a neighborhood park should include a, um, a playground and benches or whatever that might be, so that there's kind of a standard approach, but that we're also thinking about how those cannot be accessible, um, as well. And then also, you know, some other bigger investment things like the construction of our new regional park. That is one by twenty forty-five, uh, to keep us at that kind of high end of park offerings with the population projections that we created as part of this process. A new beautiful park, um, might be being killed by twenty forty-five. So I'll hit on this pretty quickly, but some, some key takeaways. It's not of any surprise to any of us that recreation is a big part of the city's identity, both for community members and visitors. Um, but that variety is a huge piece for us. There's a lot of, um, a lot of different opportunities, but it's not just youth or adults or organizations, but it's also fishing and community gathering, that there's a lot of variety to be had in the community as well. Um, the important part, one important part is that recreation provides for physical activity and the connection to resources. So it's again, another opportunity for connection. We've got a great system, um, especially when we bring in our trails to moving that through the community. But it's also the community's opportunity to connect with resources and connect with each other. Um, and that, and that connected community supports the goals that the community has as well. So I went through that one pretty quickly and it kind of set a little bit of gears. Still have a half an hour left together, but we've got a big one left to talk about. So any questions, comments on outdoor recreation? Okay. Perfect. So then let's get into the, the big, the big one of the comprehensive plan. Um, so here I wanted to just pause quick on the goals. I think the last time we have produced a number of goals, I think since the last time at least I was in front of all of you. Um, but they, so we were, we are at six, definitely in the cities and categories of connection, livability, access, resources, partnerships and resiliency. Are kind of the six key themes, um, that were, we heard loud and clear right away from the engagement process and have really been accentuated, um, as we've gone through different conversations and engagement, uh, throughout. But those are kind of our six key topic areas. Um, so the, these are the actual chapters of the plan itself. But I just again, I wanted to highlight, of course, that we've got plan elements and recommendations that are identified for each of the, um, required, um, plan elements and statutes along with, uh, recreation as well. So just from a structural standpoint, um, each of these chapters looks at the analysis and recommendations, what are some things for us to learn from? But the implementation chapter, that last chapter of the plan really then summarizes it. It has all the specific actions identified for each of the park elements themselves. But what I wanted to do in stepping through here is, um, kind of highlighting some of the key topics that came on each of these. Cause in some ways, you know, it's a housing plan and it's a historic preservation plan. So there's a lot to cover, um, in the short time that we have here. But I want to spend some time specifically on land use as well. So as I step through, we'll kind of hit on some of those hot topics and then some of the, um, supporting plans or efforts that should be looked at in tandem. Uh, but from a housing perspective, we have really great data that was recently compiled through the, uh, twenty twenty-two housing needs update. So there's some brand new information that was released in September that's woven into this process. But really looking at where we can be going and some focus areas for us are, um, looking at the missing mill is a, a planning term. But it's really what is, we've, when we think about housing, you've got your single family home and your apartment. So there's a lot of housing opportunities in between there, whether that's, um, you know, fourplexes, row homes, duplexes and things that are, um, being provided for different housing options. Um, but then also looking at a way, at ways to increase affordability and access to affordable housing for the community. Were kind of some big, big key areas for us. And part of what that means then for implementation is, you know, what are some funding tools that we can maybe put into place? How do we update our zoning ordinance to allow that type of missing mill housing to be achievable within their community so that we can increase our offerings, um, to provide affordable and accessible housing to a broader, broader community? Um, then we have our agricultural, natural and cultural resources, um, section, which I've got including a lot of components in here. Um, one of the big takeaways, um, from this chapter is our, our green borders and recreational, recreational connections. Um, this is important for us again, we're thinking about community connectivity. And we've got a great system of recreation and resources that together create a way for us to move and connect throughout the community. So we were looking at this from, we started looking at it from a stewardship perspective of the stewardship of our resources. So our, um, steep slopes and our floodlands and our wetlands. How are we making sure that we're preserving those existing resources that we're looking through development? But that they also work very much in tandem with our recreation network as well. And the way to access a lot of those resources is through our, through our parks. Um, and so making sure that we're thinking about how we connect and provide access. But recreation is also a way for us to continue to build and strengthen that infrastructure of connection. So if we're, um, looking at where the next regional trail goes or if there's an opportunity to develop this land on a big subdivision where we put that stormwater pond that may have a trail along it that could, you know, connect to other existing resource areas or things of that nature. Um, historic preservation is also obviously important for us, but also making sure that it builds on not only the, um, the built environment um, in terms of our historic preservation plan that was recently updated is supports the efforts that are within there, but also thinking about this from a cultural, um, resources perspective with that, you know, celebration of the community and identity of who we are today. So there's implementations, actions in here about, you know, celebrating diversity and equity. Uh, some of those things, opportunities for public art are enhancing, um, sense of place and community identity, some of those components. Uh, and then also a discussion on local food access. Of course agriculture for a community is something different than a, a county. It's not like we have huge areas of agriculture, you know, producing agricultural fields. But, uh, there is an opportunity for us to look at local food. But uh there is an opportunity for us to look at local food access, whether that is through the co-op downtown or community gardens and supporting some of those efforts that, you know, educate the community about local foods, but also provide access to local foods. Um economic development is an important area for us and the focus areas, of course, are um small and local business support. And that's something we heard really loud and clear in the beginning parts of our our processes. It's great that we want to bring more more people into the community. We want to make sure that we're supporting who's already made investments uh in the community. And then also workforce development and attraction, making sure that we we need to bring in, again, these companies who have a workforce and a community to support um that growth as well. So there's a variety of different um implementation actions that support kind of the focus areas. And even to the simplest things that are looking at um what our um, yeah, my brain just, my brain has left me. Um but your um home occupations, excuse me, looking at that ordinance and what we allow. You know, even just from a smaller side, if I, you know, set up my, I'm already shopping in my garage or I don't know, pulling from somewhere. But you get my point um there. So kind of diversifying what those options are as well. Um transportation, uh another one, of course, the bike and pedestrian plan is a new piece of how all of that works together. But the transportation chapter of the comprehensive plan was set almost. So we do have a discussion um looking at our kind of our community transit options. And that's something we heard a lot about if I don't have a personal vehicle or I don't go to the safe block, you might be, how do I move uh throughout the community? So recognizing what we have today and what kind of our options might be. Of course, you know, it'd be great if we could have access to our transit, but that's not likely, you know, achievable in the in the plan horizon of this plan of what are some of the things that could be available to us? Uh also looking at regional connections to, you know, getting us, you know, to visit to the Twin Cities, to Madison, um both from uh, you know, from a train perspective, we've also protected all of those pieces. And then we've also got the city loop concept in here that again, to support connectivity builds from the recommendations of the bike and pedestrian plan, how do we really look at some key loops or connection points um that we can move to, uh reinforcing how the community moves throughout? And also provide an opportunity for us to think about economic development. So if I can kind of use this loop and I can, I'm a visitor, I can park in one spot and I can walk and visit a couple of key destinations throughout the community, trying to build some some loops uh from that perspective. Uh utilities and community facilities, of course, is a really important part because it's, we can't achieve development if we don't have um these facilities and services available for us. Uh so thinking from both a sustainability perspective and embracing the work that we're already doing. Uh but then also I think the biggest implementation piece here that comes after the comp plan is going to the next phase of doing our utility plan, master planning based on the comp plan and the areas of growth probably. What do we, what do we do in the food and instructor perspective to make sure that we can service these rural areas? Um recreation builds from the outdoor recreation plan and the kidney corridor plan. Um and a couple of areas that are, we haven't already talked about, that um connection to public health and access to healthy choices, both from a physical health perspective and social or mental health perspective. Uh and then also recreational tours that we heard loud and clear. And there's very opinions of whether this is good or bad. There are lots of people that come to River Falls to participate in recreation. And hopefully they're least stopping at the quick trip to the hill and they're resting before they leave. Uh but there's more opportunities for us to build from things there as well. Um last one we'll hit on before the end is intergovernmental cooperation. Really looking at, we've got a great system of our existing agreements and things that are already placed to help us to pick those opportunities to um expand those, revise those, and build additional partnerships in as well. So the implementation actions there, it's specific into how we're working with our towns and other counties and even probably learn from and connect to the metropolitan council or, you know, activities that are happening, um, you know, not too far distance. So land use, um and I'll try to work through these relatively quickly, but I wanted to hit on uh kind of five areas that are important. And again, I wanted to spend a little bit more time here because land use is the one reason why we have a comprehensive plan. Right? It's the thing about the plan commission, when they are reviewing development applications, should be looking at a comprehensive plan to make sure that they are, that we are approving things that align with our community income growth perspective. Um and so the kind of a couple of new or emerging things um for us are our urban area boundary updates, increased residential density, mixed-use development, development regulations, and then that community connectivity, which shows up in almost everywhere. Um but from a urban area boundary update perspective, why is this important? So we did go through, um this plan does not change our um extraterritorial subdivision boundary as well. That's a process that the 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 comp plan can't do that extension process. But we do identify and have in our current plan, have an urban area boundary that is essentially where are we really focusing and growth at this point? And so we went through a process to analyze what that existing boundary is and we expanded that a little bit. So it's just like, what is, what is our focusing area for for growth from that perspective? And how do we achieve success? Well, part of that, one of our implementation actions is reviewing our growth policies and statutory growth boundaries every five years. So just making sure that we're being responsive for how growth is occurring. Um and that we're continually having collaboration and cooperation with the towns uh for what those, where we may be creating an agreement or amending an agreement where if we don't um have one existing, but it's really allows us to and have an external marketing for developers that this is really the area of what we have that would support growth uh at this point. The plan does not have a phasing plan and that was intentional. Um and um because we don't want to handcuff ourselves to, we obviously need to be thoughtful. We're not going to leapfrog and, you know, go and go somewhere out, but out way, although we don't have a connection to. But we um want to provide that flexibility for developers as they come in and for you all to work through, you know, what makes sense and how can we get us from growth opportunities. Uh the increased residential density at a high level. The current uh comprehensive plan caps us at twelve units per year um in the residential density or the densities for our residential uh land uses. And so early on in this process, we took a look at what those residential, residential densities uh should be. Uh it have increased that. So the high density residential category in the future land use plan starts at twelve units uh per year. So we are allowing some more um density in our categories than we had allow uh allowed from core. That will require in order for us to achieve success and updates to our zoning ordinance to make sure all our dimensional standards and densities align um with that policy direction. Uh but I think what's important there is it allows that it, um and where we've identified those growth areas is really trying to put some investment back in core. So all we, where we already have existing infrastructure and opportunities, how we build in density within the core of our community as well. It also supports the mixed use development that I'll talk about um in the, in the plan as well. Um and I think I already talked about how we achieve success there. Uh so mixed use development in tandem, um there's a lot of time spent through this process. How do we talk about mixed use and what does that look like for the community? Do we have specific mixed use for downtown and then, you know, on corridors and things? But we um ended up with a singular mixed use category within our future land use plan um that really allows for some flexibility. So that might be in downtown is meant to be directed and it's just commercial ground floor and residential above. But in other areas, it might be a set of row homes with a coffee shop on it and horizontal mixed use. So allowing for some different forms of mixed use to be uh achieved here. But so really um what we're trying to do here with mixed use and where we identify that category in the future land use plan is to support some, excuse me, reinvestment opportunities where, you know, maybe the opportunity to add a little bit of commercial or something like that and creates the opportunity for a new development form um and supports the guidance of existing planning efforts. So our kidney corridor plan, for example, already had introduced a mixed use concept. And so it helps to um put into policy to support implementation of those other actions um as well. So how do we achieve success? A couple of things here. Obviously there's more zoning ordinance updates that will have to be done for how we allow or manage that mixed use development. Uh and I wanted to highlight here too, we do have the uh creation of Main Street Corridor Plan that would really provide some additional detail on how that mixed use development would, could, could come to fruition specifically on Main Street. Um I also wanted to hit development regulations um as well and really thinking about um the tools that we have in places to know the different categories and what uses are allowed. But we, you know, have dimensional standards and different performance measures that can come into place that we can get the local field development, but we also like to see that in forms that are built environments around us. So um there's some increased guidance for that local field development and also help us support a consistent um identity throughout the community as we're looking at new growth opportunities as well. So there's a few different implementation actions throughout the plan to help us um succeed in this area in terms of um just creating performance standards or looking at form-based zoning concepts, which is a very planary term. But um just some other things that we can look at going into our zoning ordinance as well. And then finally, um community connectivity is, um from a land use perspective, is both from a physical environment of the ability to move from space to space, but also the interrelationship of why certain uses are next to certain uses. Um and then also thinking about how we logically grow. Um, you know, I think it was a workshop where we talked about sterling ponds, the benefits and downsides to developing in a way that we install ponds, sterling ponds and how we connect and work back through. So really just thinking about um that connectivity, both physical space and then mobility um there as well. And um a couple of things to help achieve success, obviously the recommendations of the bike and pedestrian plan, that connection to the community group um that we talked about there as well. So I wanted to hit on here too and hopefully leave us ten minutes for, to, for questions. Um implementation is that last chapter, I'm not going to go through all the details cause there's a lot of implementation actions that have been identified, but wanted to hit on the structure um that we've outlined. Um so again, the implementation plan does categorize buckets by these plan elements. So there's land use implementation, there's transportation implementation. Um and the same structure is used throughout. So we've got the action, the example here is that we need to update the comprehensive plan every ten years. Maybe one statute requires us to do it or asks us to do it. Uh we've also identified the action type. So this is a plan, this is a plan that we, we need to update the plan. There's also regulatory action and a couple of other categories. We've also identified which of the six goals this um action supports. Um so you have some where it supports all six of our actions and others um where it doesn't. So you, where it doesn't support is screwed out. Uh but then we also identified the complexity and benefit of this action. Um again, the complexity is same thing as what we were talking about with the bike and pedestrian plan, where we're thinking about the um level of staff effort and the cost that goes into it, the partnerships and the barriers that we have to overcome, how complex is this for us to achieve? Um but then the benefit is again, how, what level does this take us in advancing us to achieving the goals that we set for ourselves through this planning process? The thing I will note, um it's a little different than the comp plan or some comprehensive plan. We have things that are pretty small change to some very vague things. Uh so we tried to be as consistent as we could across the complexity and the benefit, but it's hard when we're talking about such a wide array of of things as well. But we did also identify some potential community partners that we think would be key in helping us achieve the success um of this plan. We did try to be a little bit general about who those community, some groupings of community partners um rather than, you know, specifically calling out one or the other, just so we didn't anybody out and who groups are going to emerge. Uh and then also identified a lead department or division and a lead committee, commission, council. That's part of that, the intent with that identification is that um as um community development is working on their work plan for the next year, they could go through and look at the um implementation plan and cherry pick a couple of things that they really like to to take action. Uh planning can do the same thing, engineering, all of that. Uh but it also allows us to see, except with a committee or a commission, who else should be mindful of that? So especially for our appointed um committees, it's a great opportunity to understand their role and what they have the ability to help the community achieve as well. I'm gonna skip over this because we've, I've spent a lot of time talking, but um maybe first anything I I went through pretty quickly. The only thing I missed, I don't think anything we missed. I guess the one thing that I would ask you to take a look at, maybe on that area, is if you've been on the used now. Um so while the company's of plan covers a whole array, really that is a prime focus, it's changed. So as you talked a little bit about, we did push out a little farther, it will allow us flexibility in the future of development. You can also notice that we added density in the core. So taking a look at that and maybe you should look in the policy standpoint, your ingredient, what would be key? And uh that kind of helps us go into um kind of the next steps. So with the comprehensive plan and the meeting that we have with the plan commission on Thursday is their review in comment. So that's the review of that was given to the level is like compared to our two um plans. So um just kind of that note of where that's happening or, you know, what's the status of these components are as well. But um maybe I'll hit on this and then I'll pause for any additional questions. But just so you're kind of wrapping us up about what happens next. So the bike and pedestrian plan and outdoor recreation plan are currently available on Engage Our App. We kind of did a soft launch, they've been approved or there's a recommendation from the uh plan commission on both of those. So people could go find those plans. Today, the comprehensive plan will be updated on February sixth. That could allow us to have a conversation with plan commission on Thursday and make some updates before that becomes publicly available. Uh we are going to have a open house and celebration here in the lower level of City Hall on the ninth of uh February. Um and that will be an opportunity for us to talk and learn about all three plans. Um and we are looking to close the comment period on February twenty-seventh. Um so a twenty-one day comment period from that perspective. People can also participate online. Um I think that's my next one, so I'll stop there before I go too far. Um but then the comprehensive plan specifically will go to the plan commission at their March meeting. Um and that will be the public hearing for the comprehensive plans required by statutes. And then presuming that they're the recommendation for that plan to move forward, we will come forward with all three of the plans to all of you for action on the twenty-eighth of March. Um just a couple of quick notes on what the public can, uh they start through this comment period. All of the plans again will be available online via Engage Our App. Uh that is what I was about to go pick up and download. But physical copies will be also available at City Hall and at the library. So if somebody um doesn't have access or do they have access, they can um get access to the plans at those physical locations. Um and how can you provide information? There will be some plan surveys that are, will be available through Engage Our App. So we're using that online platform so that you can interact with the physical kind of survey worksheet. Uh there will be physical copies available of that, that worksheet as well with the physical copies of the plan. And of course, we will be taking input and conversations through the open house um on the night as well. But then how is that inputs going to be used? So once our comment, as we're collecting comments and our comment period closes, we will be working to understand okay, what necessitates a change uh to this plan, what do we, what do we want to work through? Um depending on where it is, the hope is that we can look through and say, okay, um this is a, it's an easy tweet for us to make and we're gonna make that specifically for the comprehensive plan as a cycle. We're gonna make this with a bit of publically supported that. We'll make that before it goes to the plan commission. If there's a bigger policy level changes, we won't make those changes, but we're gonna have for discussion either at the March seventh meeting of the plan commission and as part of their action, they can make the decision on whether we update it before it comes for a team or decision or um whether, you know, whether we are going to make that or that change to the plan itself. So um but the intent would be that uh what comes before our view on the twenty-eighth has responded to community input or at least we've identified, um you know, where we have made changes to your understanding of both of the plans. So there was no harm in you looking at the plans um or if you're out there now, what are the plan of six? That's a good time for you to, to get in and look at that content to start your review as, as Scott mentioned. But we will make sure that you're up to date with the um feedback that we received from the communities who have an understanding of where we might be making updates or where it comes to you as well. Now, any questions? Sorry, I wanted to just make sure we got through all of those.
Yeah, um I'm at City Action on March twenty eighth. Are we taking, will we be taking action then or will it be a reading to be inspired that?
So we have to have, we have to have a public hearing on that?
It sounds like you're going to have the plan.
Yeah, we have the plan. So, so the twenty eighth is going to be taking action on?
Yes.
So the council won't, I mean, they're just gonna take on the um planning commission recommendation, yes or no at that point? And, and maybe with amendments. You have a, you have a no discussion in this sense?
Time of the open house to be worth thirty?
Forty-six, forty.
Forty-six, thirty?
I used to see times up there, just me. And the council action is resolution.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't have the two public hearings, that two councils. Certainly the council can determine if you're ready or not on the twenty-eighth. It will be, it's an agenda item, so to your discussion. I would say that's, I would expect the discussion better than this. So, we have, that's what it is, so I stand as in planning and I'm gonna give out the consent. So, um, we can if you want, we expected that you would have some, some discussion, even maybe just to keep you are satisfied. I think it's good to recognize that, even though the people may only see this at the end of March eighteen, there's, there's all this action being worked by the council, community committees that's having to be paid in March twenty eighth. So, but like any action, if the council's not ready to approve on the twenty-eighth, you don't have to.
Okay, time to look at and ask questions.
Yeah, I mean, consulting if you don't have it on the twenty-eighth, so I mean, it's, I don't think it does. I don't think that's what the contract says, so if we need more time, then that's why. Yeah, uh but I would encourage you all to um comment to me personally. You should be thoughtful about commenting to each other and doing that kind of, you know, or, but you can certainly have, develop your own opinions about things and the thing that you're comfortable with and maybe your strategy for whether you're an opted, as is, or if you want to make specific amendments, or if you want to send certain parts of the fact to a committee, you have all kinds of options.
I have a question on G H R S real quick. So if I was a community member and I had more, really, really, really deep in it and I was on G H R S or whatever, over a group, how do I know it's some exploration?
Yes, we, a variety of promotional items as well. The one great part that G H R S has is it gives us a direct um connection to them from E blast, kind of, yeah, yeah. So we use that to, to me, uh.
We're at six fifteen here. I mean, um, you know, except any, maybe you're around for a few more minutes if people want to have individual questions, so. Probably ask the U German in the workshop and then. What do you guys think?
Same, yeah.
See, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You, you agree with me to post?
Other than that, we're playing.
But this is also, it's kind of a, I don't know.
I see, I'm, I thought I said that I can't tell you this, so.
Yeah, and just trying to write those up, yeah, that is.
Exactly.
I don't know, but I'm like. Right, and I'm, uh, so you can be, right, I'm spinning. Would I totally do what you're trying to say?
He's.
So you're about to start, but I see, I'm like, well, I'm going to decide.
Yeah, it's a good, some of them are in my, yeah, that's for, um, related to re-rearing it on what's, this is, it there. But still, I'm, I'm, but some of them are supposed to be there and all brain time races. We're trying to do what's in our past, it's good, yes, yeah.